So I see this is 401, so I think I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to call the roll call for attendance. So Terry Ackerman.
Present.
Jane Hotchkiss.
Present.
Matt Johnson.
Present.
Myself, Linda Escobedo. Susan, are you here yet? Okay. Jane, are you willing to, do you have the motions in front of you? Willing to be clerk pro temp?
Will stand there.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So I'll read the consent agenda, which is relatively brief today. Town accountant warrants for October 15th. The presidential election warrant, November 3rd, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Will you please call the roll? Second.
Thank you, Terry. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair Escobedo?
Aye.
Myself, Jane Hotchkiss, aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous for the four board members who are present at this point, and I so declare. The town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, sorry.
I note that Susan has just joined.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great timing, Susan. You're here for the best part now.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. So a couple of business items and then a couple of fun things at the end. So the first thing is just a reminder that early voting has started. And it is here at the townhouse. We reopened the townhouse just for that purpose. Other town offices are still not open to the public, but the early voting is here. And people should check the website in terms of availability for hours and days and things like that. But we are providing that service here. And just as a reminder for Election Day, fine, just make sure I get this right. Precinct 1 has, the board voted, I believe, last week to change the precinct 1 polling location from 141 Kaiz Road to the townhouse because of the interior circulation, meaning circulation of people through the building is a little bit easier here. So just if you're in precinct 1, just bear that in mind. In what is becoming kind of an annual thing, this water and sewer division will be sending out a notice to all water and sewer customers about a bromide exceedance. I'm sure people may remember this from last year. I know that I gave the same announcement last year. Because of where we draw from, bromide is somewhat of an organic component. And so while it is a regulatory exceedance, the notice will tell you that it's not a public health policy or a public health issue or, you know, there's no boil water or anything. I just want to give people a heads up that you'll be receiving this notice. And it is really a reflection of kind of a natural organic cycle with how we generate our water and then regulatory thresholds. And then importantly, we're having an employee flu clinic this week. And that reminded me to kind of put out a PSA on behalf of Health Director Susan Rask on the importance for people to get flu shots this year. And I think we've seen that nationally, but I think locally it's important to reinforce that message that as we go through this phase of the pandemic, all the medical guidance we're getting is that a flu shot is really a very important step that people could do to protect themselves from potentially being confused by whether or not they have COVID-19 or the flu and also keep themselves healthy if they are doing the social distancing and mask wearing. And I know we're working with Walgreens, quite honestly, to do our employee flu clinics. So I think they're widely available at pharmacies. And so people should really make sure to take an effort to do that. We've got a lot of questions about Halloween. Like the communities around us, we are not really regulating Halloween. We're just, Susan Rask and I actually spoke today. And we are going to be putting out a news and notices about Halloween. We've held off, quite honestly. We never had, I think as I reported before, we didn't have any intention of kind of changing the, putting any kind of regulatory framework on it because there really isn't one now. But we had held off on broader messaging just in case something changed. But we'll be putting out messaging, which is similar to our neighboring communities who are all, you know, basically advising residents of what the CDC and the state guidance is and put out some advisories about best practices for staying safe and social distancing, which, you know, I think what I've heard is a lot of neighborhoods are just kind of getting together and doing their own thing within their neighborhood, which is fine. But just be advised that social distancing and mask wearing are still going to be required even if you know everybody on your street. And then it also goes for the grownups as well as the children. And so we just want to make sure people are mindful and let's keep Halloween safe. But as we, again, we have no plans to alter or regulate Halloween and trick or treating. I think that this weekend, though, we do have the drunk or treat event. As I mentioned last week, people should go to the rec department's website to find out the hours and which, depending which elementary school you attend, what time you would go. So that's a fun thing. A couple of other fun things happening right now. The Concord Library has their Festival of Authors now through the 31st. It's live and online. I know they get started on Friday. And according to Library Director Kerry Cronin, it sounds like it's going to be quite a great series of events. I know they have a packed calendar of virtual or live, online events. So people should check that out. Also, at the library, there's a scarecrow festival. And if you've driven by and seen the scarecrows, I will tell you that if you don't get out and walk around the grounds and check them out and read the descriptions, you're really missing out. It's really kind of fun and inventive and creative scarecrows, each with its own backstory. So please check that out. And then I'm going to share my screen for a second once I have right screen open. So on Friday, this Friday from 3:00 to 6:00, the Concord Public Works Department at 135 Kaiz Road is having a bike giveaway. And so this information is that, as you can see, it's at conqueredma.gov and the trash and recycling department. So people can, you'll have to sign up. So you have to go to the website to sign up. But it'll be a, this is kind of a follow-up to the highly successful drop-off day we had last weekend. So if, you know, if you have school-aged kids or young, at least younger children who may want a bike, this would be a great place to get one. So that'll be Friday. And that's pretty much all I have. Any questions?
Yes. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, thank you. Seeing none, I'll move on to the chair's report, which is just very brief. I just want to underscore that and repeat that early voting began on this last Saturday and continues through the end of the month, October 30th, at the townhouse and that there are both weekend and day times available for people to early vote. All right. I'm now going to move on to the public hearing, which is an application by GJC Brothers, Inc., doing business as Concord Gas, located at 686 Elm Street for an off-premise package store liquor license to sell wine, wines and malt beverages only. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Will the clerk please?
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes. Thank you. Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
You're muted, Terry.
Aye, sorry.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
So that's unanimous, and I so declare. So is the applicant or the applicants represented here to present this application?
Yes, I'm Pam Brown.
Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. Or I guess it's not evening yet. Good afternoon. So I'm Pam Brown. I'm a planner and attorney with Brown and Brown Attorneys in Bedford. Born and raised Bedford. I'm right next door. I thought Charlie was going to be able to be on. He said he was trying. So he may join us. But if not, I will cover. But we are here to request liquor license. And actually, let me back up. The plan for the gas station here is to do a significant renovation and to eliminate two service bays, the two garage bays, leave the car wash, but expand the little retail shop cashier area into the two retail bay, into the two service bays, which would result in about a 1,500-square-foot completely renovated convenience store. And it's proposed that within the convenience store that the wine and beer could be sold. The, I know there's always some concern that having convenient liquor promotes drinking and driving. But really, the proposal here is to create a real convenience. Really isn't intended to compete with your other local wine shops that have a much greater variety. You know, here it's really just, you know, you're pulling up for gas, you're on your way home. There are many businesses in the area that could stop to grab a bottle of wine or a six-pack of beer on their way home. So that's the proposal here. We have submitted a floor plan that shows those renovations. Charlie has been in business here for quite a long time. I think back to 20, I should write it down, 2003. And also owns a station over, close to Route 2 at the Lincoln Line is another gas service station. The proposal here really is to do a renovation and to create convenience for the public, both Concord and people that are probably doing business or traveling through. I'd be happy to answer questions. I don't want to ramble. But go right ahead.
Questions from the select board?
Hi, Ms. Brent. This is Jane Hotchkiss. I had a couple of questions. First off, I guess I wanted to note, and this may be more appropriate for Chief O'Connor, who I see on the call. But this, a very similar application was denied in 2014. And I was going through the lists. And I wanted to know, Mr. Audi is proposing, I believe, to be the manager on the premises now and that there is no longer any objection from the temple across the street. But what that doesn't answer to me is whether or not the renovations that are being proposed are contingent on an alcohol license being obtained. In other words, will Mr. Audi be renovating and expanding this convenience store without an alcohol and wine beverage license? Or is that part and parcel of it?
Good question. And I actually have not asked him specifically that question. He had planned the renovation based on having the liquor license. And with him, I don't see him on. Charlie, if you're on, jump in. But I would have to consult with him on whether he would actually go ahead with the renovations. One thing that I've seen, in fact, I did one of these in Bedford last week. Almost the same situation. There had been concerns in the past. But last week Bedford actually did grant their first gas station liquor license under very similar circumstances. There had been a prior application that was a no. And things change. And convenience of the public is important. COVID has made things very difficult for gas stations. But back to your question, I can't answer definitively. But my understanding was that this was a package deal for him.
Other questions for, from the select board? Matt?
Yeah, I guess that last response might have partially answered my question. But, you know, when I think in Concord, we haven't had any precedent that I'm aware of of either a gas station that sells wine and beer or even a convenience store. I mean, that convenience really has not been a focus, I guess, in our town policy for providing access to alcoholic beverages. That, you know, we've had definitely, I think in the past, had this very conservative approach that really focused more on risk. And so I just was curious about surrounding towns, the precedent for this in Massachusetts, those kinds of factors. It sounds like Bedford maybe just has approved something. I'm trying to think of others, you know, again, in the vicinity. I just don't often see that kind of pattern I do in other states and in other municipalities, but not here.
A quick complimentary response, I think. I can't speak to many other towns. I think one of the things that actually helped Bedford feel more comfortable with it, and you may be familiar with it, is there was a recent transfer of an all-alcohol liquor store, package store license to what I call Gammy's. I guess it's Northside Convenience, but growing up here, we called the Gammy's. And that's been actually, you know, a clean operation. There have been no problems with it. They've been in place for a year or so now. And I think just having that experience made the new approval more comfortable for Bedford. In this case, Charlie would be on premises. There's training also that goes on to, you know, to deal with, well, underage, obviously, sales, which happens with lottery tickets and cigarettes as well. But underage sale as well as obviously identifying people that appear to have been drinking. So there's, just like when you have servers in your restaurants that have training that's necessary for them to be serving alcohol, the same applies for the owner of a retail shop that's selling alcohol. And I believe Charlie's intending to be on premises 40 to 50 hours per week.
Other questions from the select board? So having a...
Linda?
Yes, Susan.
I've got a question. I think there was something in the application that said his son would also be helping manage the premises. And I assume that whoever is there as a manager or a salesperson will undergo training for the items you just talked about.
That's absolutely correct. And I know there were concerns with a younger 20-something person, you know, in the last application. Charlie intends to be the main person, but if the son is covering, he's obviously now, he's a little more mature.
Okay, thank you.
So wouldn't his record also need to be part of this application?
The application is for the manager and the owner. I don't think there's any concern if you wanted to run Cory or have other additional information. But the application itself requires the personal information for the applicant, the owners of the company, which is 100% Mr. Audi, and the proposed manager.
So I think part of the, yes, go ahead, Terry.
Oh, I have a question for the police chief concerning that a similar application was made by this establishment several years ago. And what has changed between then and now? I'm trying to remember if you recommended for or against it in 2014. And if you recommended against it then and you recommend for it now, what's changed?
Good evening. I'm Joseph O'Connor. Just, I did submit a memo to the select board outlining the changes. So six years is, over six years has changed. The day that I was asked to weigh in on the initial license was my second day as chief of police here in the town. I was unfamiliar with the applicant. I was unfamiliar, not as familiar with the town today. Mr. Audi, who was mentioned, owns three businesses. At the time, his son was going to run the business. He was a 24-year-old young man who just recently graduated from college. Had no experience in the alcohol business. I was unfamiliar with their businesses. I weighed in on a lot on the issue of the temple across the street, people being concerned there, being a house of worship. You know, this week I spoke with a rabbi, or also, I communicated with a rabbi who checked with the president of their board, and they had no issues. I had talked to Jeremy, who said that they had no opposition from any of the butters. At the time, when I initially weighed in, I was new. The location on first look was outside of normal business areas, towards the outskirts of town. Now being very familiar with our patrol plan and where our officers are deployed, we have quite a presence down in that area for various reasons. And, you know, today, looking at it six years later, the issues that existed then for me no longer exist or have more information to wait. You know, the one thing I did weigh in, I should just mention that other location, other stage locations been previously denied. I did do a little look into that, and that was back in 2010. Concord Convenience on Lowell Road. Since I've been chief, I don't think there's been another gas station to apply. After the denial, I was, did speak to Mr. Audi and his son. And, you know, they pretty much told me, watch us over the next few years. And particularly his son, improve what the successful businessman looks like. And we've had no issues with any of their, any of their businesses. So as far as from the policing end, I have no opposition. Really, you know, what I think a policy decision for the board to decide on.
Thank you very much, Chief. Are there other questions from the select board? I have one additional question for Ms. Green, if I may. And that is, in the application, Mr. Audi states that he would be the manager 40 hours a week. And given the number of other businesses in town, how realistic is that? That he be listed as the only manager of record?
Sure. There's always a manager. You know, obviously, they can't be there for every open hour. So the proposal would be to have other trained adults that were present. But this would become his main operation with others running the other stations?
Thank you. And then one other question relates to the proposed floor plan. It looks like with the renovation, there would be one entrance for all transactions at that site, both for gas and for convenience store, which would require all customers to walk into that structure. Is that correct?
There is a secondary entrance, assuming I'm looking at the correct plan, that's closer to the car wash as a secondary entrance. And then there are egresses, like more emergency egresses at the rear. Both are at the front in clear view of the cashier. And the idea with the location of the alcohol was to have it in direct view of the cashier so that people coming and going, you know, would be easily viewed by the person, the adult that's employed managing at the time.
All right. Sounds like, it sounds like that is the leaning route. Someone trying to weigh in?
Yeah, just one more question for the chief. Because one issue that you had raised in the original application was with the lack of experience in alcohol-related businesses by the staff and the manager in particular, you know, that would be running this. I mean, any changes now that would affect our evaluation of that?
So all I can say on that is my opinion of watching them run their other businesses and have no other issues. I think they, at least to me, demonstrated to be very responsible parties. There's certainly the laws and procedures they have to comply with. And if they don't, there are procedures that the board can take should there be a problem with any type of violation.
So you mean things like the lottery tickets and the cigarettes and monitoring the consumption of those?
Just the general business practices. We haven't had any issues, any type of problems with any of the employees, anything like that?
If I could, Madam Chair, is it okay if I respond as well?
Sure.
The other thing that happens with these facilities as well as restaurants is the ABCC, sometimes in conjunction with the local police, will conduct, I call them stings, but, you know, the surprise visits. They send people in underage trying to purchase. And it's a good way to get shut down if you don't comply.
I'm aware of all of that. I know there's kind of, it's a type of business. There are people with experience running those kinds of businesses.
Right. I've done a lot of liquor permitting, not in Concord. You know, there are always, whether it's restaurant or retail sales like this, you know, people start new businesses. Here, at least, we have a going business with someone who's experienced in running the retail, understanding IDing and things like that. So yes, it's a new product. But I guess I think of it as a little bit more of a new product line as opposed to something brand new they've never done before.
Linda, if I could ask or just comment, I still would want an answer to the expand, you know, the condition or lack of condition on the change in the floor plan and the change in the business structure based on an alcohol and beverage license. And then I have a question. How, given that this would be precedent-setting, how many other wine and malt beverage licenses do we have left in Concord if this was to be issued?
So I included the packet. I included the ABCC form that they've sent us, which states that. So I'm just pulling it up real quick. I can...
I saw that. It just didn't help me make the, I couldn't figure out based on that.
I think there was one, just one left.
That's what I, that's what it looked like? But since this is a new category, I wasn't sure how that worked.
I think it, isn't it just, it's either all liquor or wine and malt? I mean, they're different.
So Concord currently has two available wine and malt off-premise licenses to give out. So if we, if the board issued this one, then there would be one left of this kind.
It appears that Mr. Audi is on the meeting, so maybe he can respond. He's texting me and saying that, yes, he would build the convenience. I knew that he would build the convenience store if he had the liquor license. What I wasn't clear on is whether he would build it anyway without it. But Charlie, are you able to unmute and respond?
Yes. I'm gonna try to rebuild and remodel the convenience store with or without. But with the liquor license, I believe it will be more profitable for me.
Now that we have Mr. Audi on the line, does the board have any further direct questions for Mr. Audi? All right. Well, stay, thank you, Mr. Audi.
Well, actually, I did have one, which is, I guess that there will also need to be a ZBA special permit, right, that is not specific to the alcohol but to the reconfiguration and I guess perhaps some change of use, right, with the store? That has not yet been submitted, right?
That has not been submitted. And I will need to look into that because I initially was not anticipating a need for the expansion. But it's entirely possible that to expand the existing store would need a special permit.
I'm pretty sure it will. It did last time.
Okay. That's my fault. Because I do permitting and I didn't, I didn't look further into it.
All right. I would like to open this up now to, for public comment. Is anyone, anyone available who would like to make a public comment? And Jeremy, if you can also help me identify who that might be?
So if anybody wants to make a comment, you can click the raised hand feature on Zoom and then we'll be able to see you and then call you. We have Russell Gamber.
Okay. Mr. Gamber?
Hi, I'd like to read an email I wrote earlier today when it came to my intention that this was being posed to the town. I will say, I've been a resident of Concord for over 10 years. And I also use the services of Mr. Audi and find him to be, you know, upstanding business person. of Mr. Audi and find him to be, you know, upstanding business person and I've never had any complaints. We get gas and service.
Mr. Gamber, excuse me, could you also state your address?
Sure. 79 Elsinore Street.
Thank you.
So having said that, we partake in the services that Mr. Audi currently is established in doing, gas and servicing of vehicles. I have gone to the gas station in question at the end of Elm Street and I've purchased gas and convenience there. However, I do not believe that we, as a community, should be issuing these types of permits to convenience stores within Concord. I think it's a slippery slope. And while I do find Mr. Audi to be an upstanding business person, regardless, I think that it sets a precedent that we need to be very careful of. If it's okay, I'd like to read the letter that I wrote.
Go ahead.
It's come to my intention that there is a hearing today regarding the permitting of ABO George Incorporated, owner of Gas, Concord Gas and Oil and located on Elm Street along Route 2, to be allowed to sell alcohol. As a resident of Concord and a parent of three underage boys who attend the Concord Public Schools, I would like to express my disapproval allowing a liquor license to be issued to a gas station. This gas station is located along a major highway, Route 2, and next to a motel, Best Western, which both lead to one-time purchases that do not lend this establishment to get to know their customers. Concord prides itself on upholding a high level of citizenship among its residents. Gas stations are typically not establishments that hold themselves to the high standards more established stores do, where they get to know the general community they serve. Gas stations that are located along major thoroughfares typically do not think of themselves as serving a community, but rather serving as many people as possible, regardless of where they hail from. It is my opinion that this would lead to an increase in underage purchases of alcohol as the goal of this license is clearly to increase revenue. Furthermore, the liquor stores located within Concord already serve this community in an adequate capacity. All of these establishments are located within areas where there is an abundance of foot traffic and located next to other stores that serve the needs of the town's citizens. If the question is about access, there are plenty of other places near Concord Gas and Oil that sell beer, wine, and liquor. Within a three-mile radius, the following stores fill this need. One, Concord Market, 2.3 miles. Two, Walden Liquors, 2.1 miles. Three, West Concord Wine and Spirits, one mile. Four, Colonial Spirits in Acton, one mile. Five, Crosby's Marketplace, 1.9 miles. Six, Crosby, I'm sorry, Concord Provisions and Country Kitchen, 1.6 miles. As you can see, there are plenty of places that currently serve the area's needs when it comes to the purchase of alcohol. I feel that this license was granted, I feel that if this license is granted, it would set a very dangerous precedent that would fuel the influx of liquor license applications by establishments that typically would not seek to sell alcohol, including stores that serve the needs of minors in our community. And therefore, I implore you to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamber. Are there any other public comments?
We have Paul's iPhone with his hand raised, and if Paul, you could identify yourself beyond that, that would be great.
Sure. Hi, it's Paul Jenny, 99 Tarball Spring Road. And I guess along the same lines as what Russell just laid out here, my concern in granting this license is really around the precedent that it would set with selling beer and wine out of convenience stores. As a parent of two children and underage children in Concord, it's just concerning to me and I think that, you know, it could, again, lead to a slippery slope. I think that the market's already pretty well covered with, and I think Russell just laid out a laundry list of places in the area that could meet these people's needs. And I think that, again, I have concerns with the store just being 100 or 200 yards off of Route 2. It seems like kids not only from the Concord, the town of Concord, but also surrounding towns like Acton and Maynard and Sudbury would be, you know, easy to get there, even if Mr. Audi does a good job of, you know, denying them when he's there. I think that kids could kind of zip in and zip out, you know, into the gas station. So I do have concerns and I would urge you guys to vote no on this.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have my hand raised.
Tanya?
Yeah, Tanya gave us 62 Prescott Road. I was reading Dory Kehoe's letter before and the fact that the location is on Route 2 is a little bit of concern to me. I wouldn't have any other issues with it, but the fact that it's on a major highway and people might buy drinks there and then accidents may occur afterwards. Just wanted to, just wanted to chime in. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public? Jeremy, do you see anyone else from the public?
No one else with their hand raised, no.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I just have one more follow-up question for the chief, just based upon some of the public comment. Chief, are you aware of any difference in safety between the type of formats, you know, associated with these different formats of stores, compliance, traffic accidents? You know, I mean, I imagine it's difficult to track down, but I'm just curious about whether there is any association with these formats relative to public safety.
That's a great question. And no, I'm not familiar with any data on that. What I can tell you is from other locations and to other businesses in town, very good job of checking IDs and so forth. And the information that we get is that youth do not try to purchase very often in our community. And, you know, I would expect that any applicant that comes to the board will hold a high standard as well and make sure that they're people are fully trained and make sure that they always are on the side of caution, have a valid ID.
Just a quick further response?
Yes, Ms. Green.
Thank you. So in terms of underage drinking, you know, the kids are out there, they're not getting it in Concord and they wouldn't get it here. This site is distant from the schools and everyone is correct, it's a convenient location, it's close to Route 2. But that's also a reason that people who aren't looking to buy the bottle of wine for a fancy dinner, but rather just an everyday bottle of wine, might stop here on their way home, on their way out of town from working over at Emerson Hospital or working somewhere in the neighborhood. So, you know, I understand it as a fear. I've been in this business for some time and I've spent a lot of time working with the investigators at the ABCC. And there's really, it goes down to the operation. They can, you know, it's the operator, it's the business person, it's the level of quality of the shop that's being performed. And the, remember, also will be an income generator for the town. From the business side perspective, yes, it's a potential source of greater income, which is kind of relevant these days because the gas stations are struggling with much lower gas sales during this tough period of time. So I encourage you all to keep an open mind and maybe give it a shot. These licenses get renewed every year, so if it's not working, you certainly have a right not to renew it.
All right, thank you.
Linda, may I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Does the board of?
Well, we can, let me, we can, will that hold until we close the public hearing? We'll have further board discussion after I close the public hearing. Jeremy, I don't see any others wanting to speak from the public, do you?
I do not, nope.
All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
All right. Second, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous to close the public hearing and I so declare. So further board discussion. Any unanswered questions or comments? Susan?
I have a couple of comments. There are two remaining wine and malt beverage licenses in Concord, so at most, there could be one other establishment that has that unless someone sells or goes out of business and there's another one available. I think that the location, it doesn't lend itself to kids walking down Elm Street to get to, it's just not a convenient location for foot traffic, certainly. And I think Mr. Audi's record as a businessman, as well as already checking IDs, because the Elm Street location sells cigarettes and I think lottery tickets, but I'm not certain, and those both require vigilance. I don't see that we have strong grounds to deny this. It's an established person who has had no difficulties with the ID checking for the other products that require it. And I think it will be mostly out of town, I mean, people driving by. And I don't think, just because you buy something off the highway, you're going to drink it in the car on the way home. So I would support this request.
All right, Jane?
Interestingly, some of the things that Susan suggested, while I have nothing negative to say about Mr. Audi or his business, which we use for gasoline whenever possible, I am adverse to this particular precedent setting. And I'm actually concerned about its location, not because of underage drinking, but because coming in and off of Route 2 right there, where the rotary is, where already you have traffic problems at many times of the day. As somebody who uses that space coming in and out of West Concord, I actually, I don't, I would like to hear from a traffic perspective, how, other than Concord or traffic coming down Elm Street that's going to enter the rotary anyway, folks coming either across from Baker Ave already have a, that's a light that is triggered by and can back up the any time of the day. I mean, I just, I'm worried about that piece. Because while, of course, it's for folks moving down Route 2 and I completely appreciate that, I'm worried, I'm worried about the traffic disruptions at peak volume, even at this point in time when we all know the traffic is minimal because of COVID. I don't feel that trying out a liquor license during COVID times with the ability to send it, you know, if I were to vote yes, I would intend to vote yes for this liquor license, not for the trial period of the year. I don't think that's fair to Mr. Audi either.
Terry?
Yes, I have a procedural question. Do we, does the select board need to vote this now or is it possible? It sounds like this application also has to go to the zoning board of appeals. So is it possible that it could go there first and then come back here? And in the meantime, I don't know, I feel like I need more information. I'm honestly not ready to vote right this minute. So I'm just wondering if we have to vote first or can the CBA vote first?
All right, any other questions?
Well, I guess I just want to state that I would be fine personally. I would prefer to vote, let's say, next week rather than to right now. I feel like I've just gotten a bunch of information. We've gotten, you know, we've gotten letters from the public. I doubt that we're done getting letters from the public. I suspect we may get more. And then, you know, have an opportunity at that point to deliberate a little bit more and then take our vote. I think that a one-week delay would not jeopardize this application one way or the other if we do that. Now, if we don't come to that decision, I have more to say, but I'd like to propose that we continue this to the next meeting.
All right. I have no objection to that. I was concerned that there was relatively late notice on this in terms of giving the public a chance to respond to this. I think we've had some good introductory information here, but certainly there's a lot to consider. So I, if we're ready, is there any other comments from the select board? If not, I would propose to continue this public hearing until our next select board meeting, which.
I mean, we've closed the public hearing.
Yeah, if I can interject, just I think procedurally, someone could make a motion to reopen the public hearing and then continue it. And I apologize for my interruption. My son is in the hospital and that was the hospital calling.
Thank you. Thank you. So do I hear a motion then to reopen the public hearing?
Move to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
All right. And that's unanimous. Okay, now, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing?
Move to continue the public hearing until our next select board hearing, which would be October 26.
At 4:00 p.m.
At 4:00 p.m.
Or 4:05, if you prefer.
All those, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thanks.
All right. And that's unanimous and I so declare. So I think we'll continue this next week. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Who provided information today. Okay, the next item is to finalize the FY '21 select board goals. I, in the packet today is version three, and I attempted to, I did highlight major changes or new.
Don't you have to close the public meeting? Did you close the public meeting?
No, I don't believe it did.
We continue to.
Continue the hearing.
I know, but then don't you close this? Okay, I don't know protocol.
Yeah, I think we're set with continuing the public hearing. Matt, does that make sense to you? Yeah, good, thank you. So I'm moving on to the select board goals. So in version three, I tried to highlight major new language that's in here that was either a result of, most of them were a result of the comments that were made at the last time and I tried to capture. So are there any additional comments on the material before you? Susan?
I thought last time when we talked about under balance, equity, and diversity, we had, you had. had, you had an item on affordable housing continuing to support, I can't remember exact wording, but it was the-
So it's number three. The Select Board said that the goal should remain as a goal, and we'll see what year goes. So it's number three, submitting annual town meeting 21 warrant appropriation article for affordable housing following recommendations from the Affordable Housing-
Sorry.
Do you see it?
Under which category?
Under balance, equity, and diversity.
Because my number three says provide input to the housing production plan updated to maximize-
Now it's version two, and there's a version three that the packet was updated.
Oh, the second packet today, or the packet earlier today. Sorry.
That's all right. Any other comments on this? Terry?
Linda, you, I think you did an excellent job putting together all of our comments. And the only slight change that I might recommend is in the Effective Governance, Board Organization, and Communication, number nine. It says, "Support the public review," I think it's a typo, which says "of" all new public-private partnership agreements. And my question is, is the Select Board supposed to support the public review, or are we supposed to also participate? Was my understanding that we were supposed to participate in the public review. I might be wrong on that.
So, yeah, there may be a better word there. The idea was to ensure that it happened.
But also that, would it happen at a Select Board meeting, or would we be involved?
We would be involved, you know, and the idea is that there would be a review in public, for the public to participate as well as ourselves-
Right.
-in a public forum.
Okay, so my suggestion is just that it says, "Support and participate in the public review of all new public-private partnership agreements."
Is everyone else comfortable with that?
Hey, Linda. There is a, the Board adopted a policy as a result of the report of the P3 Committee, and I don't think, I think the word choice is fine, but I didn't know if maybe we wanted to look at that before settling on the action words, but I just wanted, for Terry's benefit, there is a policy on the Towns website that's pretty digestible. And it outlines the Board's role.
Right, I know that. I just don't have it in front of me. But I think the wording, "support and participate," wouldn't in any way conflict with that policy. So I think, I think that's a fine suggestion if everyone else is comfortable with that. Okay?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I'm glad to see this list. Now, we've just got a lot of work to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So Linda, just one-
Sorry, Jane, I couldn't hear your comment. Positive one, I hope. Good. Okay, thanks. Stephen?
Yeah, so sorry, I did, I had draft sentences for the Public Health and Safety value and guiding, values and guiding principles and the economic resilience ones. I thought I shared them. Maybe I didn't, but I, after this, I'm happy to share them or I can read them now.
Oh, economic resilience is in here? It was talked about-
Yeah, okay.
It was talked about last week, and it was added?
Okay. And the one for Public Health and Safety is just protect the physical and mental, you know, well-being of Concordians.
All right.
Was the one I drafted. It doesn't matter. But I didn't know if I maybe neglected to circulate those.
No, they weren't. Yeah. I think we've captured it in, you know, our COVID requirements here, as well as the Public Health and Safety.
I did like Stephen's phrasing for the Public Health and Safety, to protect the physical and mental well-being of citizens. That sounds great to me personally, but I know minimizing the number of changes at this stage is something we want to seek.
Right. So minimizing employees and citizens, right? Was what we were trying to capture.
Okay.
We were trying to capture both.
I may be looking at, I'm looking at the word version I could circulate that had parent parentheses there. Am I looking at an old one?
Yes, it is an old one. Linda, the draft three says exemplary of best practices for safety.
That's my bad. I thought I sought and found the most recent. I apologize. Jeez.
Yeah, it's in the new packet.
No, I must have scrolled past one of Jeremy's emails. Sorry, sorry, guys. That's my fault.
All right. You know, I think, I think we've captured the concepts. Are you comfortable with that, Stephen?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
I just-
All right. So do I, if we're, if there are no further comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Select Board goals, and thanks to everyone for all your work on this.
Yeah, and as distributed in our packet today with the one amendment proposed by Ms. Ackerman.
And, yes, which also picked up a typo in that same, in that same line. All right.
And thank you, Linda, for putting this together. Excellent job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the FY21 Select Board goals dated October 19, 2020, as amended.
Second. All those, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Before we move on, off that- Sorry, off that agenda item, is, can I talk about, we had talked about the SMT talk, having their own discussion about goals, and I just wanted to briefly-
Okay, can I just finish my sentence, please? So that vote was unanimous, and the chair so declares. All right, Stephen?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, couldn't hear you. I've got all kinds of problems tonight. So we had talked about the SMT discussing goals as well, and I just wanted to report to the Board that the goals that you just approved are obviously going to inform much of the work done by SMT, but we did have a goal-setting session of our own, and the discussion briefly was really what are the kind of, we've got the Board's goals that we're going to obviously follow, but we also have other big issues that we really want to focus on as a group of senior managers. And we're still finalizing the language, which as, as we can all understand, sometimes takes a little bit of time, but the two main themes are focusing on employee wellness and work-life balance and diversity, and both, and really specifically diversity in our organization. I think there are broader community goals that I think the Board's goals touch on, but ours, we're really kind of an inward look at the organization, and so we are picking up on, I think, two of the main priorities for the Board, the Select Board, and really internalizing those as well. And I just wanted to let the Board know that we had had that goal-setting session, and that was the outcome. And I'll certainly share the final language once I have them, but it'll just be two specific goals of wellness and diversity.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing those. Thank you. Okay, the next issue is to discuss the green card policy. Let me say that, as we all know well, there are a number of vacancies right now that are posted on the website. We hope we've captured all the vacancies that do exist at this time. There are, they may represent more than typical activity, but that's not unusual for the beginning of a new fiscal year, and since our town meeting for the last year was just in September, we're working to get all those filled. But that activity level has generated a lot of questions, both for Jeremy, who tries to implement our green card policy, as well as questions from Select Board members, and also from our committees and the public. I've, the town manager and myself have talked about this on a couple of different occasions and agreed that it was probably appropriate and sooner rather than better to bring this to the Select Board's attention for discussion, not only of existing policy, but to hear some of his recommendations for potential change. We all know that we are highly dependent on our, yes, Jane?
Just for the public that's watching, can you direct folks to where on our website this list is, so that anybody who hasn't found it can find it?
Jeremy, can you give the specific reference?
Sure. So if you go to the Town website, and then you go on the right-hand side, and it says, "How do I?", and then under "Apply For," there's a tab for Board Membership. And if you click there, you'll see the full list of Board and Committee vacancies that we have.
Thank you, Jane. So I was just gonna, and Jeremy, I was just gonna further comment before opening it up for discussion, that, as we all know, we depend on broad participation from our Concord citizens on our committees for effective town governance, and we hope that that representation is, represents our full citizenry. We are fortunate to have many competent committee members who devote, who have volunteered to devote their time, talent, expertise, and actual commitment to following through with their assignments, which we count on, and both for their involvement, and particularly when they bring institutional knowledge over time, but we're also dependent on new perspectives coming from new volunteers. And it's that combination that I think with volunteers, sometimes enhancing our committees with specific skill area expertise that makes our whole town governance process so effective. So with that, we have before us some recommendations for process and/or change from the town manager, so I'd like to open it up for comments. Terry?
Yes, I'm really delighted that we are taking up this issue. This is one of the issues I've been wanting to take up for over a year. So thank you for putting this on the agenda and opening the discussion. And I think before we turn to the recommendations, I think we should ask, what is the issue or issues that we're trying to solve here? And in my mind, it's kind of like what Linda said, we need to do some more or better recruitment to get enough candidates, frankly, and a diverse pool of candidates. Some committees don't have enough people applying, and some are looking for more diversity to really represent the whole town. So I have some specifics about that that I'll get to later, but I think that before we get to recommendations, we really should, maybe other people have other objectives, but my objectives are to try to make it really easy for applicants to apply and let it be known out there really, really well that we're looking for talent in the town.
Okay, thank you for an opening statement there on that. Other comments?
I had three sets here. One is that, first of all, I agree with Terry that recruitment is probably our number-one problem, and this policy is not addressing recruitment. So we do need some better outreach mechanism. The second is that the policy as written doesn't really identify it, but this policy is clearly for Select Board-nominated committees, not for others, at least as written. And then, thirdly, it, as it's written, seems more of a top-down policy than a bottom-up one, that I would expect actually for the first round of kind of filtering to happen at the Board or Committee level. And then, you know, the nomination is really brought to us, and then we evaluate that nomination and approve it. That's what I would prefer to see, rather than a top-down process that begins with us and then engages the Board members later on.
I would add to Matt's comment. Thank you, all of you, and thank you, Stephen, for putting this together. My historic expectation of Board and Committee, of the green card approach and working with the different Boards and Committees as a Select Board member has been as the liaison, and therefore typically, when there has been an opening on a Board or Committee, I will ask the Chair or any, if I'm at a meeting, you know, what are the needs? You know, who do you, who have you, who are you looking at? What are the needs that you have? And I see myself as another resource. If I can think of people that, or look through the green cards historically, it'd be obviously much better if they were all online. But, you know, I can offer my services that way, but I don't see myself as the person selecting the potential new committee members. I see myself as a part of the team, a liaison. And, you know, perhaps we all need to gear up a little bit more of our efforts and be better liaisons. But that, again, I agree with Matt, that the initial pool, or certainly the qualifications and ideas, I've always pulled from the Board or Committee first.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Yeah, I agree with what's been said so far, and I think for the Select Board-appointed committees, the Chair is a key person. The Chair of the Committee is a key resource for, just what Jane said, finding out what kinds of skills they're looking for, and that that should be a priority to involve them. And also, all the committees are not staffed, all the Boards and Committees. So a lot of them have their own, you know, take their own minutes, and they don't have a staff person. So I think the person who most intimately knows the function and how the committee's been going is the Chair. So that's my comment.
I would just add, just, and I see that Stephen has comments, which I welcome. Historically, this has also been true for the town manager committees as well. I mean, there hasn't been sort of a church and state or a town manager Select Board. It doesn't mean the Select Board is asserting control. It's just been a conversation. I mean, it was a, appointing authority was simply an appointing authority. Sometimes we had to vote on something, sometimes we didn't, but since the, we're tapping a resident pool, and that, you know, the more ideas, the better.
So Terry?
Well, I agree that the Chair is a very key person, and a lot of times, the Chair has done some recruitment, or other people on the Committee have, and that's great. But sometimes, they are able to just articulate what their needs are, but they don't have anybody. And what I'm wondering is, is I've had this experience as a liaison, there are some green cards, maybe they're hard copy, maybe they're online, but the Chair doesn't have those. And I'm just wondering if there's a way, if John Smith applies to be on the ABC Committee, if it's online, can that Chair get, immediately get a copy of that? So then, a year later, when there's a vacancy, now this Chair has this list? Or some kind of process where the Chair is really involved in getting these green cards of half, only the ones that have to do with his recognition? Does that make sense?
Yeah. The question I have about the green cards is, is there a date on them? Because I know that going through the physical green cards sometimes yields, you know, past Chairs and people who have been on the Committee or are no longer able to serve. So it's something that identifies that, at least when the card was submitted, so that-
Right.
You know how-
I think that's important, yeah.
I think they do have a date. And what we might want to do is have a cutoff, like if the green card is five years old, 10 years old, or three years old, or whatever the cutoff is, you know, maybe... Because a lot of those people have moved out of town or gone on to other things, by that.
If I could jump in just on the memo, can you not see me anymore?
Sure.
So one of the things, when Linda and I talked about this, and I talked to some folks internally, one of the things that I... And I'll say that my lack of experience with this style of, with this system for appointment is complete. We did it very differently in Long Meadow. And I think this is a pretty advanced system. And so I wanted to... I asked around to the people who've been here longer than me, you know, do we have a process that's written down for how we should be doing this? And the answer naturally was no. And as you all know, I replaced somebody who was here for quite a long time. So the lack of familiarity with community members, you know, that's... I think that's an issue with recruitment, especially on my end, because I am new, and I don't really know that many people. And COVID-19 has made that even more difficult. And so that part has been... Is a new issue for the town manager's office, anyway. And so I wanted to kind of... I put the biggest draft stamp I could find on it, because it was really just a set of thoughts of how could we, just from an administrative standpoint... And Matt, you're right, I kind of set the recruitment question aside, because I really just, you know, if we can't... If we don't have a set process for just administering the green card program and getting people through to select board agendas, or to town manager appointments, then, you know, then we're not even on first base here. So we have to... I was really focused on that, the administrative side of it. And so in Linda's and I's conversation, I didn't realize that this probably should be turned into an APP or something like that. Or maybe, you know, APP 10 does not really reference this process. And so this could be turned into a more formal policy. This was just kind of my own initial thoughts about how to make sure we have some backstops to, for example, an appointment that was a town manager appointment. I thought I'd take... The first wave was reappointments. And I thought if people are only at the end of their first term, reappointment would be easy. Well, it turns out someone really was ready to cycle off the committee because of things going on in their lives. We still had the green card on file, and they still were serving on the committee. But I had no idea that they didn't want to continue. And it's capturing those moments, just as a baseline matter that I was hoping to build in these processes for. But I agree with you, there's a lot more that can be done with this to really focus on recruitment and diversity. So I just wanted to give the background of what those thoughts were. And I don't think it's intended to be top-down, but ultimately, as the appointing authorities, it's ultimately our responsibility to make sure that we get some kind of process right. And so that was this first blush at it.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, can I comment on something?
Yes, I'm just gonna go to you next. Go ahead.
Great. So I just wanted to answer questions that Terry and Susan had. So I'm obviously relatively very new to this process. I've only been working with the green cards since about May or June. So all this feedback is great. Terry, what I've been doing is I've been forwarding over the cards. Immediately when they come in, I get an email. I've been forwarding them. I know you've been on some of the emails and CCing the liaisons. But I've only been doing that for a few months. And then Susan, I've started tracking the dates in our database that we have, that we share with the town clerk's office. So I've started to track the dates to... In the future, you know, in five years, people, we won't be hopefully pulling green cards from 2020, because now they have dates on them. So I just want to answer that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask to clarify that a minute? Did I... I have noticed that, Jeremy, that in the last few months, when you get a green card, you've been sending it, if on the liaison. Are you also sending it to the chair?
Yeah. So what I've been doing is sending it to the chair and then CCing the liaison.
So that is a huge improvement over what we had before you came. Even that one improvement is tremendous. Thank you.
So one comment I would like to... Or a couple of comments I would like to make on this is that many of the... When we have vacancies still existing on the committees, in many cases, the committees have sort of exhausted their pool of people that they would like to approach. And particularly when we're getting into the, you know, now at this timeframe. And when we take cards, it's good that we immediately get potential volunteer information out to the chair and to the liaison, so that they have that in front of them. We may not currently have a completely accurate handle on the length of term that... Terms that some of our volunteers have served. And in general, we try to find, follow with... Following APP 10, you know, two terms, and then give an opportunity to someone else, unless we cannot find that specific area of expertise anywhere else, or don't have any volunteers in that category. So, you know, before we re-up people, it's good if we're somehow doing some background on, is that the current information we have on the terms accurate? So that's one comment I want to make, so that we do open up some room for new volunteers as they come forward. Now, having said that, I also value the institutional knowledge and expertise that exists in some of our people who do have an opportunity to take their skill set and move to another committee. But when we send these cards to the chair and the liaison, I guess one question I have is, are we meeting our conscious decision-making in terms of diversity on our committees? If we think skill set expertise is important to match with committees, are we always, you know, is this process we're talking about in terms of automatically sending it to the chair and liaison capturing that is a question?
No, it's not. I think we need to have almost like a brainstorming discussion, the five of us, about how can we do a better job recruiting and get more diversity? I think that what we're doing now, that Jeremy outlined, is an essential, very, very essential first step. That wasn't even being done before Jeremy came. So that's great. But now we need to go further. So I think we need to do three things. One is, at least three things. One is brainstorm together how we can do a better job recruiting. Secondly, this may have been fixed, but about a year ago, I knew three people who applied with green cards and did not get a proper acknowledgement. They got a really weird form letter that didn't mention the name of the committee they applied for, or the town of Concord or anything. And it went into their spam folder. And so two of those people were so mad, they said, "Nobody acknowledged me, and I'm not ever going to apply again to be on a committee in Concord." And that is a terrible waste of our talent. So I think we should work on that. And the third one is, if we're fortunate enough to have more than one applicant for an opening, then someone didn't get the committee appointment. But that other person who didn't get it is still interested in serving and has talents, we need to find a way to encourage that person to stay in the green card pool for some other committees. So those are some of my ideas that I'd like to get comment on from other members.
Can I just comment on that, Linda?
Sure.
So when people submit green cards, they can submit a preference. So if they don't get their first choice, then we still have them under the preference for two other committees, at least, if they select them.
Correct. But I guess I wasn't clear. We should send them a letter. The chairman who didn't accept them, or the select board, or the town manager's office, somebody should send them a letter saying, "Thank you so much for applying. Unfortunately, you know, it didn't work out this time, but we still have you on file for this one and this one. And we really appreciate you. And because we just, we don't have enough applicants. We don't want to lose these people. There's a lot of talent in this town." So it would be really nice to send them a nice letter.
Oh, Stephen?
Yes. So I just wanted to throw a thought out. One of the things that I see as a potential issue is the kind of rolling nature of it. I know that in my first go at it, looking at green cards and trying to find out if they were current or not, and kind of all that stuff, it's... People can submit them for a vacancy that may not be coming up in three years. And so it's kind of a rolling nature of it. I'll be honest with you, it can be hard to track and be somewhat of a difficult administrative problem for us, because we're... You know, it's... It just, when you're not in it more regularly, it sometimes is hard to track some of it. But I know some communities do it where, for a certain period of time, for us, it would be maybe you do 60 days before the end of town meeting, when the term, the new term would go into effect. And they have basically a recruitment window. And I don't know if that had been done in the past, and a decision was made to do it on a rolling basis. But I think it's really a kind of recruitment period versus a rolling application period. And I don't know if there had... When the last time there had been a discussion about the pluses and minuses of those approaches.
Okay. Now, I think what we're doing here is accumulating some comments and suggestions. And then I'm going to guess that some people need... Somebody's going to need to go to work and draft, take a stab at drafting and capturing a lot of these ideas, and then bring it back to us at some point in the future. But let's, while we're on this right now, let's keep generating these kinds of comments and questions. Susan?
Actually, thanks for suggesting that, Stephen. I hadn't thought about that approach of having a period of time when we focus on the committees. But I think that is... Would be really helpful once the committees are full and we have some sort of pool of applicants that we can draw on. But I know that there are committees that are, you know, are looking for people. And I think in that case, they need... Those positions need to be filled as soon as they can. And that requires a recruiting that's not necessarily just seasonal, but ongoing in some ways. But it'd be great to be able to kind of consolidate it that way. But I think we need to get more candidates before we can do that.
Matt, do you have any... I have to click here to see the next screen here, so I can see you. Do you have any comments you want to make on this?
Well, I put out my comments at the very beginning. But I just think that it might be helpful from the recruiting perspective if we had little, just a one-minute video for each committee, where maybe the chair of the committee, or one of us, or somebody describes the nature of the work, the type of commitment, the type of skills, the, you know. So there's really... I mean, I guess you can go to the website, and you can see the charter of the committee, but it's pretty dry. You know, I'm just trying to think of how do you have like a career fair? I mean, it's a committee fair, you know, but... And do it virtually. And, you know, we don't expect people to come out and, you know, want to come talk to people necessarily, but just to get them, their interest piqued, is, hey, here are the things that are out there, even, you know, people could understand what they're getting themselves into and whether they want to participate. The skills in this town are just astonishing. Anytime that we make these appointments, I just can't believe the people we find, you could not pay as much money, you know, as it would cost to get them. But here they are as volunteers.
That's a good point. And even if it was a composite kind of video recruitment piece on just the whole green card process and inviting volunteers and...
Concord needs you.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Linda, I just... And I love that Concord needs you. I see the poster already, although I need to change some pieces of it immediately. But, you know, I've often thought, you know, you almost want to have this as part of your welcome packet to new residents in Concord. In fact, I had the opportunity to talk to somebody who has been leasing a property here for a while and is looking for a place in Concord, and would be an amazing new find for a board or committee. And we... And, you know, I seized that moment. We talked about where he could go to find the opportunities. But, you know, it's... It would be great if there was, you know, in that, you know, the "Welcome to the Neighborhood" basket of, these are ways to meet people. I mean, for myself, it was clear to me, as somebody who moved to Concord in midstream with kids, who were, you know, in the elementary school but not starting, I needed to find a way to connect with my new town. Not everybody knows that, that there's this way to give back and to connect. So thinking about it through that approach as well. I also just wanted to put one statement out that is very true. Because we have this incredible, often both inspiring and intimidating wealth of brilliance and strength of experience in Concord, I think sometimes we recycle a lot of folks from boards and committees. That often helps, because these are people who already know the process. But it doesn't necessarily help our diversity. And that was something that Terry was getting to. So we just, we need to figure out, you know, how are we welcoming new in versus moving skills around?
Thank you, Jane. Other comments from the board? So I guess...
Just real quick, I love this idea of this one-minute video. And I'm wondering if we could call upon Erin Stevens or somebody to, you know, help do this. And in the one-minute video, I think it would come to life, and the chair could say, "Don't be intimidated." See, a lot of people, I think, are intimidated. They think they have to be experts in finance or the aging or whatever. And that's absolutely not true. And so the chair could say, "We just need people with common sense," or whatever they need. You could just explain it in one minute. I love this idea. And I'm really wondering, I just want to ask Stephen, is this something that we... Do we have staff resources that can help us do this?
Well, I do like the idea of a recruitment video as well. I guess I need to note that there are, what, 65 boards and committees? And obviously, it takes more than one minute to make one of those videos and process it and post it. And so maybe looking at the idea of a recruitment video as maybe a five-minute video of the pleasures of serving on boards and committees in Concord and talk through the process, instead of 65 one-minute videos, may be a direction we want to go in. But yeah, the short answer is, for something like that, yes, I think a recruitment video is something we could easily try and put together. I know my friends from Minute Man Media Network are listening, and I think they may look forward to an opportunity to do something a little different. So I think we should tease that idea out a little bit. I agree. And no, this is all... It's all great feedback. I think, like I said, I have felt, you know, to some extent, caught off guard on how this, some of this has played out. The only thing I want to say is, this is, we haven't mentioned this. I, you know, I was obviously... I did recruitment in previous lives for people, to get citizens involved in boards and committees and volunteer for activities. A lot of that happened at meetings, at town meeting, at committee hearings, things like that. And Zoom is good for many things, but it's not really a space for those one-on-one, you know, back-of-the-hall conversations, where a lot of that recruitment, I'm going to guess, took place. And so I think we need to, you know, give our... I think the recruitment, I think, definitely has suffered. I think probably in part because of that lack of face-to-face, you know, at-meetings interaction. And so as we think... And so as we think about, there's recruitment over the next, say, 12 months. But then I also think there's recruitment looking beyond the pandemic. So I just, I did want to note that because I, I just can't see how that wouldn't be a factor in, in this, in this process.
So one other question that's come up, sorry, Susan, go ahead.
I, yeah, I like the idea of the, the video because I think that there are so many of these committees that are really hidden gems and are, and the idea of being able to put together some kind of a template that, that captures the committee. Not, I'm not talking about the video now, but that could incorporate some of that. But also, as others have mentioned, the time commitment. You know, if, if you're interested in this, this might be a good fit. Or something more broadly than just specific skill sets. Because some of them need, the primary, as, as I think Terry said, is the, is the desire to do it and to be involved and not to be, not to be intimidated.
So one other question that's come up has to do with broad representation on any one committee. So for example, if there's an issue that's Concord Center only, and we don't have at least some membership that more broadly represents the town, you know, a question has come up about whether or not that is fully representing citizenry of the town on a particular committee charge. Are there comments on that?
I, I would have to disagree, at least for the West Concord Advisory Committee, one that I've been associated with, that, you know, it's a subcommittee of the planning board. So, you know, even if everyone there is West Concord-based, it's pro-West Concord. It's strictly that, that one interest group, if you will. You know, those concerns are really a, a source of input to a town-wide process and its town-wide committee. So I, I don't see an issue. What I do see is the issue that Terry pointed out, which is just trying to increase diversity in general. So, you know, age, gender, race, whatever we can achieve in this town. Of course, the town generally has demographic challenges for diversity, but, you know, we should seek that.
Thank you. What about committees that don't feed into a larger town-wide process?
Hard to understand, like, the only other ones I can think of are like the cultural districts committees that are specific to, you know, a sub-geography within the town, you know, and are trying to achieve, you know, activities for that district. So I still don't see it.
I can at least think of one that comes to mind, and that's the Nuclear Metals Starment Reuse Committee.
Okay, so dealing with a site.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't realize that there was an issue there personally, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just giving an example of a committee that, yeah. All right. I, I think we've generated a lot of good discussion on this. Obviously, a lot more work has to be done. What I'm hearing in terms of going forward in a productive way is certainly at the committee chairs meeting, we can ask participants there to comment on what's working, what's not working, what, what additionally they need to, to bolster participation on their committees. But as I listen to all of our comments and the comments that have been submitted by the town manager, it sounds like we almost need to think about sort of framing of philosophy, or what our objectives are, or however we think about that. And that's one piece of this discussion that I'm hearing. Another piece of this discussion, I think, has to do with how do we, what's the message we send to potential citizen volunteers in terms of steps that they have to take? Or would like, maybe take in the process of researching out the committee that they're going to come on, or whatever. Sounds like a whole nother section might be on the internal process of how this, this works. And, you know, the town managers gave us some guidance, but obviously, we've been adding all kinds of other ideas and suggestions to that. And then there, obviously, recruitment comes into this in someplace also the, but that would be part of both the process, I think, the, the internal process. When I say internal process, I'm thinking of both for the town manager's office and for us as select board liaisons in terms of our own role in that. So I guess, and there may be others. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to capture some major categories that jumped out to me right now. I think it would be helpful if we had a couple people as a working group to try to tackle putting at least a draft in some of these areas together so that we can advance this conversation further. So do I have any takers, anxious takers who want to help with this?
I'll work on it.
Okay.
I suspect I'll be voluntold to be a part of this too, right?
All right, anyone else at this point want to? All right, Terry?
I could, it's, I just think that, yeah, all right, okay.
You, you made the.
Terry and I will work on it.
Very good. Thank you, both. As a working group, I think if you could just put together some kind of draft and capture the areas that I outlined, as well as your own thinking, that, that would be great. So thank you, Susan.
How does, is there an impact of open meeting law on this, since it's two of the? I'm just asking, I mean, I hope not, it'd be, because the open.
There is.
Well, it's, it's, if they're not acting on behalf of the board, there is not. They're doing subcommittee work.
There is, sir, please, please study the law, sir. There is, I know, I filed an openly winning meeting law complaint against the Long Range Plan Committee about exactly this kind of thing. They just.
Tanya, thank you very much. Thank you. So Susan, I think you raise an interesting, you, you raise a good question. And, and there's always a fine line here. And I guess the, the, in the interest of, you know, making sure we're covered, I guess I would recommend that then we appoint the two of you as a subcommittee. And then you just need to publish your meetings. Okay, are we, any comments on that?
No, I think that's, I think that's, that's, makes sense.
All right. Do I hear a motion to appoint a subcommittee? To a draft, our next steps on the, the green card process and recruiting volunteers, successfully recruiting volunteers and giving them direction and giving ourselves direction on this?
I move to appoint a subcommittee to develop next steps in the process of recruiting and retaining volunteers. Does that capture that, what you?
Boards and committees.
For boards and committees, sorry, and commissions.
Yeah, thank you.
And do you want to appoint members or the second?
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and, oh, I see. And appoint, yeah, include that as part of the motion and that we appoint Matt Johnson and Terry Ackerman to be members of that subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, no, sorry, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous with our hearty thanks to the two people who have stepped up for this committee. So let's, you know.
Can I just make a, a comment on? One of the difficulties of being a committee of five, especially as a select board, is we can't speak with each other.
Right.
And that, and so every time you have two people, I know that's the law, but it sure makes it difficult to accomplish things. And, and that's all, that's all I want to say, it's very frustrating.
Now, may I say something about that?
Tanya, if, work, if you could just hold that comment for public comment, but thank you, thank you. Yeah, so by getting the drafts out in the, it is frustrating for us to be in that position. And I think that, you know, this process that we've just gone through with the goals and so forth, we've had to take a little longer than would be ideal, but at least the public has heard our, our discussion. And, you know, Jeremy can, can, can collect feedback, if you're looking for feedback, but it can't be distributed to all of us until we meet again. So, all right. Stephen, did you have anything further to say about that?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's, you know, I think there are times where there can be sub-dalogs, but I also think that, that for something like this, where what we're trying to do is create a process that is going to be ultimately a public process, that it makes sense to do that and get input from people as, as we go along. And so, you know, and, and this is going to, and I have to say thank you to the board because I, I really, like I said, this is very unfamiliar territory for me. And I feel like being a part of this will help me be able to better, not only manage the own, my own appointments to boards and committees, but also do a much better job supporting the board and, and all of yours.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, if I may, just really quick, respond to that. You brought up a great point. Linda, you said you were going to talk to the chairs at the chairs' breakfast.
Yeah.
You could let them know if they have any particular ideas of what they want us to do with this process, if they could get in touch with myself or Matt, that would be really helpful.
Well, I'll probably have them submitted to Jeremy, and then Jeremy can, can, can get them to both of you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, and that is regarding the open meeting law complaint dated October 8th, 2020, regarding the Transportation Advisory Committee that both the town manager and the select board received. The purpose for this being on the agenda tonight is to ask the board to authorize delegating the response to this complaint to Town Council, Amina Marcarius, to respond to this complaint. So do I hear a second? Do I hear a motion? I'm not.
Susan, you're on mute.
Yeah.
I apologize. Move to delegate the responsibility to respond to the open meeting law complaint dated October 8th, 2020, regarding the Transportation Advisory Committee to the, to Town Council, Amina Marcarius.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion of the board? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that is unanimous, and the chair so declares. Right, the next agenda item is committee nominations.
There's none, there are none listed on the agenda, so.
Right, and so the next item is miscellaneous, is committee liaison reports.
I just have one, and it happened just prior to this meeting, which was one of the reasons I was a little bit late. The Board of Registars met and talked about the process of the, the, dealing with the ballots, the mail-in ballots and, over, over, and the, over the next period between now and, and the election. They sent out 8,000 ballots and have received, over 3,000 have been returned at this point. They sent out 200 overseas ballots and have received 100 of them. They had a very good turnout for, for in-person voting. On Saturday, they had 330 voters, and they were lined up, and nobody seemed to mind that they had to wait. On Sunday, they were 197, and for Monday morning, this morning, there were 140. Now, the state has issued a number of directives about election advisories. And Kari said that typically, there, there, there's maybe one. This year, there are nine. But specifically, what they talked about today is the process for dealing with the mail-in ballots. And what they have agreed to do, and you can do, is you have, you can open mail-in ballots, remove them from the envelope, flatten them out, and, and, but nothing is processed until Election Day. So there's no, you know, record of voting until November 3rd. The other thing they decided to do tentatively is that ballots received up to a certain time, they decided 5:00 PM, that are dropped in the box or received in the mail, will be processed. Anything after that wouldn't be counted until 5:00 PM on November 6th. Now, they may change that because it depends, they may get to the end of next week, and so many people have already submitted mail-in, and so many people have already voted, early voting, that they'll just take all of this and keep the polls open until they can get all of these ballots in the system. And Kari spent some time talking about the, there's, the, the lists are updated daily. So if you put in, you mail in a ballot, a ballot, it's included in a, in a list that's statewide. So the state, so the state knows, for instance, they can tell you, oh, Bob Jones voted, moved to Acton and voted there. So this, that, you know, the ballot in Concord is not valid. Also, if you mail in a ballot and you can't remember if you mailed it in and you show up to vote, the system will, you go down to the town clerk, and there's a system for determining whether or not you've already submitted a ballot. And so that, that's the main business that they talked about, which I was curious about myself, and I'm sure other people were too. If you are, want some more information, if you look on the agenda for today's meeting for, for the Board of Registars, there's a reference to the State Advisory, Election Advisory 20-02, which has a whole lot of detail. It's a complicated process, but they've got a lot of volunteers in place. And they will start counting ballots with teams of people, the ballots that they've opened and, and, you know, put aside on November 3rd in the morning. And there'll be teams of people to process. They have, what do they call it? They have these, the machines that they are using to process the ballots they used in the September election, but it's a sort of new, kind of a new system. So there's a lot going on there, but they seem to be well on top of everything. That's it for.
Thanks, Susan, that was timely. All right, who would like to go next?
I'll be quick. I just had one meeting, which was the Community Preservation Committee meeting. They made the assignments for their upcoming interviews. So rather than rattle off all of them, the, there are interviews that are going to take place. of them, the, there are interviews that are going to take place, first set is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, then there are another group of projects, so it'll be the following Tuesday on October 27, and then the third set will be the week after the election on November 10. So those who are interested in the applications, these interviews will, you know, be the best approach that citizens would have to really get an in-depth view of the projects. I did miss the site visits that took place on Saturday morning, but there were site visits to a number of sites, including the old rifle range, where there's going to be some idea of a upgrade of the path so that it's accessible throughout the year, and a number of other sites around town. So just a quick update on that.
So Matt, so there'll be a schedule published by the committee saying which projects are in which states?
There, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the best location, because it was revised, and now, yeah, looking at the agenda for each meeting will tell you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like, Jane?
I, I will be the briefest, because I did not have any committee meetings, but.
Well, you deserve a break, because often your list is long. Okay, Terry?
Okay, I attended the CMLP, and there's a new chair, Alice Kaufman. Also, some good news, we have now 453 electric vehicles in Concord, and 90 more people have signed up for information at an upcoming roundtable. Also, some more rebates are being offered. There's a heat pump water heater rebate that has been offered for a long time for residents, now they'll also offer it for commercial businesses. And there will also be an air purifier rebate that they're developing. The next meeting I went to was Public Works, and Stephen already covered about the bromate. Also, beginning in April of 2021, the Mass DEP is requiring us to monitor for PFAS quarterly. PFAS is a chemical that's used in a lot of products, I think, for example, non-stick cookware, and previous testing has shown no detectable levels in Concord. So hopefully we'll stay with that, but we're going to have to keep doing the tests. And the Cambridge Turnpike is going to need additional repairs on the headwalls and culverts because they started settling. So the schedule now is early November paving, then the sidewalk, then the guardrail, and to open the road by Thanksgiving is the goal, depending on the weather. And then just two very short meetings, the local cultural council is starting to meet for the year, getting ready for their grant cycle, and the Ag Committee has a new chair, Lee's Holders. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks very much. I'm just going to comment briefly that I had a chance to, since I missed a meeting, I had a chance to listen to the October 13 Concord Carlisle Regional High School meeting, where they had an outside consultant who came in to talk about the governance role of the committee as it relates to the role of the superintendent. I would highly recommend all of us, while it's still online, and you can access it through MNN YouTube public recording, and before they take it down, to look at that, because I think it has, it was very well done, and really has direct parallel to the our issues in terms of our select board governance role as it relates to the town manager's office, and particularly call your attention to, they address issues such as caution that needs to be taken when we respond to questions and, and/or our role as liaison as a single select board member. But even though they're talking about school committee and, and that side of the town, it really has so many direct parallels to us, and so I highly encourage everyone to watch that. It's about two and a half hours long, I, I think you can, the first two hours are what I'm calling your attention to in particular. So that concludes my remarks.
Could you repeat the date of that meeting?
October 13.
Thank you.
Yep. The next agenda item, I think we covered all the reports, the next agenda item is miscellaneous correspondence. I think we received a number of responses to the liquor license application that was on our agenda tonight. There was also some additional citizen concerns about the misuse or infractions, alleged infractions of the use of the Esterbrook Woods Trail. And then there was additional correspondence, follow-up correspondence to our last board meeting discussion on the intersection at Garfield Road and Sudbury Road. So I, I tried to capture the, what I saw, at least, that had come in at some point earlier this afternoon. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Yes.
Hi, yeah, I have a, a number of things. I'll, I'll start with that.
Would you please state your name and address?
Tanya Gaila, 62 Prescott Road.
Thank you.
Susan's comment that, you know, two of you can't communicate, yes, you can. What, what I'm, what is against you, or what, what the open meeting law says is that if more than one person is appointed to do a task, or selected to do a task for the committee, then that is a subcommittee. Otherwise, if like Susan wants to email Linda, and Linda wants to email Susan back, there is nothing against that. And by the way, I, I, this is not, when I, when I make those comments, it's not because, necessarily because of common sense. I certainly don't have anything against Terry and Matt meeting in private and, you know, formulating green card policy, it's just that, since, especially Susan asked the question, yes, it is, it is, it is a matter, and it is something that until now was thought of as being okay, that people could just select a subforum group and let them do whatever, and it's not so, it is a subcommittee, and some other issues that might be important. As far as the feedback to each other, you can send your comments to Jeremy, and he can send it back to you all without saying who said what, then it is okay to do that. So those are about that recent open meeting law. And also, by the way, you don't really need Mina for everything, you can just ask the Attorney General, what, I mean, they, they give free advice. The other stuff about, is, 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 both, both, when you were talking about the green cards selection issue and about the select board goals, none of those are in the packet. So again, we didn't know what the documents were. Now, I, I know that if, if it's requested, you would probably send it to us, anyone who asks for it in advance, but we don't know that. I mean, I mean, there is a packet there, and some of, some of the stuff is on it, some of it isn't on it, so it should be clearer. As far as the selection of people to committees, I was going to say that when the chair states what they prefer, yes, there is definitely value in that. There is also value in selecting people to committees that do not necessarily share the chair's view. So, so it's also okay for the select board, or whoever is appointing, to, to keep that in mind when appointing people to committees. And the other thing is, what Matt was saying about West Concord and having only West Concord people in there being a good idea, perhaps, it may also be good to have one or two people who are not in West Concord, whatever, because, because decisions made for one part of town can influence the decisions made for the other part, like especially when planning board decisions are concerned, precedents are concerned. For that matter, here in East Concord, not Central Concord, not the fancy neighborhoods, but where we are, you know, near the farms and everything, we, we have no way of connecting. I mean, maybe we should consider an East Concord committee too, in that sense. So I, I think, I think I'll stop now, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there, is there any other public comment?
I'm raising my hand, Linda.
Okay, Diane?
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to say that if you're looking.
If you just state your name and address, sorry.
Diane Proctor, I'm so sorry, 57 Sudbury Road in Concord. I, I just want to do, to say that if you're looking for people to serve on committees, one of the places I would turn is to the established committees outside of the town's Aegis, the Council on, Council on Aging, the League of Women Voters, the Concord Can, those, those, those committees that don't fall officially under Town Aegis, but I think often attract a large number of activists and people who care about what the town is doing and wish to get involved. And if, if there were a way that one of you could join one of their meetings and speak about the importance of being engaged, I think that, that might help a lot. I don't know, but I mean, that's certainly, it's, it's a mere recommendation, nothing more, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I speak only for myself and not for the League of Women Voters, I'm here as an observer, but I'm only speaking for myself, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none.
Linda, I have a question, if I may.
Very quickly, Tanya, please.
Well, it's, I, I'm wondering why my open meeting law complaint was about the Transportation Committee, and technically, they are the ones who are supposed to meet and answer the complaint, not the select board. I mean, you were copied on it, because, you know, you were instrumental in forming that committee, so, but you are not that committee. So is this because part, part of the, part of the, will I just find out when Mina writes to me, is that it?
I would say at this point, we've delegated this, the response to Mina, so yes.
No, no, you, you, you have, you may have delegated the response to Mina as the select board, but the complaint is against the Transportation Advisory Committee, it's not against the select board, and by law, they are the ones that are supposed to meet and reply, not the select board. They can delegate it to Mina, but I, not, that's what I'm saying, but they also have to.
Right, thank you for your comments. Tanya, thank you. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Susan, you're muted.
Yeah, second.
Are, are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Move to.
To adjourn, executive session, not to return to open session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for personnel of the ASCME Local 1703 Library Supervisors Employees Unit and ASCME Local 1703 Library Non-supervisors Employees Unit. Doing so in open session may have detrimental effect on the town's collective bargaining strategy.
Okay, and I'm going to repeat that as, from the chairs, that we, I'm going to, as we've just heard the clerk, I intended to ask her to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for personnel of the ASCME Local 1703 Library Supervisors Employees Unit and the ASCME Local 1703 Library Non-supervisors Employee Unit. Doing so in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's collective bargaining strategy. So we've heard the clerk also call that, and so is there, call that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That is unanimous, and I so declare, we are not to return to open session, let's all log on to the executive session as quickly as we can, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.